All right. Hello, everyone, and welcome to a special edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley. We are joined today by our founders Greg and Amanda Kilwin and our special guest Nicole. We're going to get into who Nicole is and why she's here in just a moment. We're not going to do our usual roll through of hellos and highs. We're going to do this just a little bit differently for you guys today because I've got some things I want to show you. But first, as you're coming in, definitely pop over into the chat. Let us know where you're coming in from and how excited you are to find out what we have in store for you today. Who is excited about this? All right, so today we're going to talk about how to grow like a pro in half the time. Those of you who are our members, who we've been working with, we hear from you all the time about how much you love what is possible with working with Get Oiling. But one of the main frustrations that we hear from you guys is just how much time it can take for you to figure out if you aren't already an expert marketer, what exactly you're going to share or how you can deliver a class that doesn't take you two months to create, right? How many of you have been frustrated with that very thing? Like, I just don't know what to say. I don't know exactly what to share, and this is kind of standing in my way of progress. Well, today we're going to tackle that. But first, I want to kind of go over a couple of things with you. First, we've got a big announcement, obviously, that we're going to share. If you've never been with us before, welcome. We do these classes every single Thursday, live at noon Eastern, and they're totally free for anyone growing a young living business. Then you're going to see what we're going to share with you today, this big announcement in action. And then we're going to get into some Q and A and share with you some very special promotions that are going to come out as a result of this announcement. So first question, who here, show of hands, who here uses Grow Workspace to grow their young living business? We got quite a few here, maybe even the majority of folks, hands, hands, hands. I see a lot of familiar hands here. All right, so a little bit of backstory, you guys. Again, we are committed as a community, and I think I speak on behalf of Grow Workspace and of Get Oiling here. We are committed to helping you figure this out, right? To helping you grow and to be abundant and successful with your business and your purpose and getting this out to the world. So we have joined forces, if you haven't heard about this already. Grow and Get Oiling have partnered together to offer something very special for you. Who's excited about that? So first, I want to give our founders of Get Oiling, Greg and Amanda Kilwin, the opportunity to share a little bit about Get Oiling, how Get Oiling started, and kind of where we are today in terms of what Get Oiling offers. For those of you who are not familiar with Get Oiling, and then we're going to have our guest Nicole from Grow Workspace do the same. So Greg, Amanda, take it away.
Sure, yeah, I can kick it off here. So, welcome, everyone. We're really glad you're here today. So, I think it was about 2014, Amanda got interested in finding some, you know, natural solutions to some of the issues we were seeing and decided that we were, you know, got into, you know, being a distributor for Young Living. And she was looking around and wanted a website. And at that time, you know, we looked around a little bit, and I've got an extensive background in software and web development. And so I built it. And from there, you know, her upline noticed it and was like, hey, this is nice. You know, do you want to show this to the other builders in my team? And one thing led to another, and pretty soon this, you know, there was a lot of traction there. And then, you know, once we had some good customers there, a good customer base, then people started asking for more. And, you know, like, oh, we would like emails. How about a contact manager? What about this? You know, and so then one thing led to another. So, over the years, so Get Oiling launched in 2015. And so over the years, it's grown from just a personal website for young living distributors to now like a complete marketing system. You know, it's got, not only does it still have the website, it's got multiple themes in the website. But, you know, it's got like email, marketing, text marketing with an option, with an optional two-way texting add-on, for example. So you can like text back and forth, get your own number. It's got Zoom built in, so you don't need a separate Zoom account. It's got blog, events, RSVP, member area, just like the list goes on and on and on. Reminders, follow-ups, it's just, yeah, I mean, don't want to go into all the details and bore you here. But it's grown into the, you know, complete business system, and we're super excited to, you know, share that with you all who probably have never heard of us yet. So, yeah, Amanda, anything you want to add to our story there?
Thank you, everybody, for coming on today and learning. And thank you, Nicole, for being here as well. Yeah, it's been quite the journey. And what started out as something that was just a website has become this all-encompassing platform that people are really enjoying. And being able to have partnerships with like Grow Workspace is some of the last icing on the cake for our customers, which is very, very exciting.
Awesome, awesome. So now I want to have Nicole share a little bit, for those of you who are not familiar with Grow Workspace, would love for you to share a little bit about what this looks like and what you guys do for distributors, Nicole.
Sure, no problem. So thanks for having me. This was very impromptu on my end. Chrissy was supposed to be here this morning. She is a bit under the weather, so she had to run out to the doctor. And so needless to say, here I am, filling some very big shoes. Grow Workspace has a similar beginning as to what Get Oiling does. Basically created to fill a need. Chrissy Chin and Claire Van Bemelin are the co-founders of Grow Workspace. They are sisters and also young living business builders themselves. And so there was a need on their end for resources and trainings that they could roll out to their team. And very again, similar to Greg and Amanda, as they rolled that out to their team, more and more young living business builders were seeing that, and they were wanting to be able to use it for themselves. So Grow Workspace was born on November 1st, 2017. So just celebrated two years recently. And it has grown into pretty much a one-stop shop for young living business builders. Someone can come in brand new into Young Living and get plugged into the Grow Workspace trainings that we offer that teach you how to begin your business, how to reach out to your team, how to stay connected with them, new member resources, the whole nine yards, even teaching you how to use our content on various platforms to train your team through Facebook or webinars, Instagram, the texting services, all of it. And so this partnership with Get Oiling, just like Amanda said, again, it's just the icing on the cake. It's very exciting to see how these two platforms, both grown out of a need, are going to be able to come together really to give young living business builders everything they need in order to be able to grow.
Wow, wow, you guys, show of hands, how excited are you to see how this works? This is so powerful, right? So just to kind of break this down, you guys, what this ultimately means for you is that you get to get twice the work done in half the time. Because with Grow Workspace, the work is done for you. Like Nicole just mentioned, they have expert marketing content. And that doesn't just mean marketing to get new business. This is the stuff that you use to educate. This is the stuff that you use to retain, and this is the stuff that you even get used to get yourself educated and to duplicate in your organization. These are tools that were created, educational tools that were created to help duplicate a team in the first place that you have access to when you are a Grow Workspace member. Now, when you add that to Get Oiling, what we are in this context is that content delivery platform. We are where you plug in the Grow Workspace stuff. We are where you put the classes and the Sway files and the campaigns and the images and the things that you text out or email out or put into a member area. They create the expert content. We've got the place for you to house it and broadcast it to the world. How cool is that? It's such a perfect match in terms of you guys have this and you put it in here, and now you can go grow your business with it. So, guys, how much time, tell me in the comments, how much time is this going to save you in growing your business, educating your team, educating your prospects, keeping your members engaged? Can you imagine how much time it will save you? Now, you may not know yet exactly what this looks like. Some of you may have an idea because this is something that Grow has done with other platforms in the past. But we actually have a way, and you're going to see this soon, to have these things magically appear inside of your Get Oiling account, like a click of a link, right? I want to share with you just a handful of ways, and we can talk about more of this. And some of you have actually seen us train or seen me train on how to use Grow's content with your Get Oiling account. Now you can do this even easier than how I've shown you workarounds. So first, this is something that is probably the most popular request. This is probably the most popular way that you guys are used among your members is to plug in classes to use in text broadcasting and email broadcasting. For those of you who don't know, Get Oiling, with our contact manager and email and website and member area and Zoom and RSVP and everything, our text marketing is integrated. You don't need a third-party texting service to do this. In fact, it works better for you to have everything under one roof because when you send a text campaign out to someone through Get Oiling, you can see in your back office, in your analytics there, who's clicked what, right? Who's accessed what information? And whether it's email or text and member area or wherever, an RSVP, you get the full picture of where your prospect is or where your member is in the grand scheme of what you have planned to share with them, right? That is huge. And these things, guys, are going to be uploaded instantly to your Get Oiling account if you have access to those particular resources through Grow Workspace, all right? Now, you can also run your Grow Workspace classes with Zoom, which Greg mentioned is included, not separate, included with your Get Oiling membership. So you use their presentation, and just like you would do a class on, say, Facebook, you can do that class on Zoom with an RSVP. No need for Facebook Events or Eventbrite. You can actually own your list of people who RSVP, text them from the same platform, email them from the same platform to remind them, and then, of course, to follow up. You can also run your Grow Workspace classes and share educational materials inside of your own private membership site on your Get Oiling website. How cool is that? You could also create funnels, right? Lead generating and prospect educating funnels with Grow's campaigns and Sway presentations that you can deliver instantly and simply using Get Oiling. And seriously, you guys, this is kind of the tip of the iceberg because they have such great expert content, and there's so many different types of content. Like Nicole mentioned, there's Instagram photos, there's Facebook classes, there's PDF presentations, there's Sway presentations, there's video, not video, sorry, there's images for campaigns and texting and email, and there's copy and everything. The sky's the limit with what you can do with this. But at the end of the day, I think the most important thing that you need to know is that you have the ability now with a click of a link and a click of a button to take the Grow content that you have purchased and have that show up in your Get Oiling account, ready to send out to your people. How cool is that? All right, now, if you are not already a Grow Workspace member, you want to go over there right now. Go to getoiling.com/grow, G-R-O, getoiling.com/grow for grow. Now, when you're there, for those of you who are watching this live or who are going to see this recording here in the next handful of days, you can use the code FRIENDS19 through the end of this month to get $5 off a new monthly subscription and get a free DIY class. And if you are not yet a Get Oiling member, you can go to getoiling.com/growlikeapro, G-R-O, like a P-R-O. And it's a dollar for your first month of Get Oiling. And bonus, you get the Kidsense campaign for texting or emailing from Grow for free. All you have to do is sign up, send an email over to Grow, let them know that you are a member of both and that you would like to get that Kidsense campaign. Now, who wants to see this in action? Quick show of hands, who wants to see how simple this is to have this show up in your account? Look at all of these hands. That is fantastic. All right, well, let's go ahead and do that, and then we're going to pop over to do some Q and A.
Awesome, thanks, Ashley.
Sure.
Get this going. Okay, so see my screen here? This claiming, or what we're calling claiming a resource bundle, is super simple. So Grow Workspace will give you a link that looks like this one. It's going to have a bunch of numbers, whatever, don't worry about it. It's a link that they'll be in, I don't know what you call it, Nicole, it's like the, we call it like the Get Oiling back office. I don't know if it's the Grow Workspace back office. Wherever you log in to get your content now, there'll be a link there that looks something like this. And then you click it, and it takes you to a page like this. It'll show you what's in there. And some of them will have a description of like how to use it. I think, you know, Nicole, you've been adding some of those in there as well to get people a little kickstart on that. And then it'll tell you what it includes, like, okay, this one here, this is a test account, you know, so this isn't actually one of the Grow bundles. It's the test bundle, just to show you, but it'll say like, okay, here's this campaign called Accelerator. If there's other things in there, it'll list it. All you have to do to get this in your Get Oiling account is click this box and click Claim. And then that's it. It'll pop up a little box saying congratulations, and then everything that was listed down here will be in your account. So I won't do it here, I already have this account with this accelerator campaign inside my own account. But like a campaign, for example, that would just show up under Settings and Campaigns. You can take a look at it, some of them, you know, you might want to take a quick look at to see, you know, to personalize it a little bit for your own use. But then all you have to do to send it to people, it's super simple. Go to your contact manager, click Manage, Filter, or select the people that you want to send it to. You know, you don't, or if you send it to everybody, you don't have to do that. Click Actions, and then if you wanted, then just click this Add Campaign. Pick the new campaign out of here and hit Apply, and then boom, it's going to send it all out. So like within four or five clicks, you've got this thing sent out to everybody that you want to. So it's cool. It's really super simple.
Wow, so quick, right? Guys, how easy is that? Who has any questions about how that works? Really simple, right? You'd click, click, and done. We did have, no more cut and paste, forget where you are and start over. Shelley, you've been at this for a while, and I know a lot of you guys have. Some of our, actually, a great deal of our members are already using Grow Workspace. You already know what a great combination it is. But now you know how much more quickly you're going to be able to integrate these two amazing things to build your business. We did have a couple of really great questions come in. I want to recognize, first, there was a question about whether or not you need to have both Grow Workspace and Get Oiling to use this. The answer is yes, you do. You need to have both to use both. And there are a number of different options, and that was the follow-up question. So could we please share the link? Maybe just click the link to our getoiling.com/grow and show them what the Grow Workspace options are. And then we can show them the Get Oiling options. We also had a question before we go too far into this, because I can answer this very quickly. We were asked if we are mobile friendly, if Get Oiling is mobile friendly. The answer is yes, 100% yes.
As is Grow Workspace. We have an app now as well, so Grow Workspace is mobile friendly.
Perfect.
Awesome, are we going to talk about?
Yes, yes, yeah, let's talk about what's included in the Grow Bundle. Nicole, can you share with us what they'll get when they sign up for Grow Workspace? If you go to getoiling.com/grow?
Yeah, so when you sign up with our premium bundle, you see you have two options there. You can sign up either annually, which when you sign up with the annual option, saving over $50 right away, is essentially like giving you almost three months for free, as opposed to signing up monthly. When you sign up monthly, if you use the current promo code that Ashley shared, you will get $5 off of that first month. Both options do include a seven-day free trial, so you have seven days. You are not charged at signup. You have seven days to check out all of the content, decide if it's going to work for you, which obviously it's going to work for you. It's going to work for everybody. And then decide if you want to continue with your membership or not. That will automatically renew after the seven days, if you don't cancel within that period. So as a premium member, you will get four classes stocked in your workspace. These are some basic 101 classes along with some business building classes. And signing up this month, you'll also get the two free classes that we are offering to Get Oiling members with the Holiday DIY Class and the Kidsense Class, so that you'll be able to work with the funnel that Ashley already had set up. And I don't know if you've showed them already, if you're going to show them. And then also included with that is bonus resources. There is a 48 lesson business training section. You will have access to the Grow Like a Boss Bootcamp, which is something that you can work through yourself. And then once you have worked through that yourself, it actually unlocks a leader training for that so that you can work with your members and you can walk your team through that if they are Grow members also. We have the monthly Aroma Freedom Technique sessions that we offer to all of our VIP members in our Grow Workspace Facebook community. Along with, we released some seasonal bonuses, so we are releasing like some Happy Meal, postcards and printables and the whole nine yards. So your premium membership gives you access to all of the new content that we release going forward. And that's two classes or resources per month, along with whatever bonuses we throw out.
Awesome, that's fantastic. I had a question come here in the Q and A about the bundle. So how is a standard Grow Workspace different from the bundle? Was the question, Nicole.
I'm not really sure if I understand that question. So we do have different plans with Grow Workspace. So there is a basic plan, which offers you access to just our monthly newsletter and IPA calendar. And there is a Pro Plan, which is in the middle, which doesn't give you access to the Facebook community. So there's a few less features that are included with that. The Premium Bundle that we offer gives you access to all of the new content going forward, all of the new releases. And then we also have a class store for any past classes that you may want access to that were released before you joined.
Fabulous. Another one, I am a Grow Workspace founding partner. Does that automatically make me a premium member with access to the Premium Bundle?
Yes and no. So as a founding partner with Grow Workspace, you have access to all of the classes, all of the content that we have released since the very beginning. However, when the founding partner membership was rolled out, we were not currently offering the newsletter and the IPA calendar. So that is something, the basic plan was rolled out after the founding partners' membership. So as a founding partner, if you find you don't have access to the newsletter and IPA calendar, you can just send an email to support@growworkspace.com, and we have a discount on that basic plan that we offer to our founding partner members. So those two combined then give you everything that the Premium Bundle includes.
Awesome, let's see, so there's some more. We'll all grow workspace subscriptions work with Get Oiling. I mean, really, any content that we have queued up, and right now it's campaigns, but we will be expanding, right? Am I right on that, you guys?
Yes, so currently, all, like, as a founding partner, you are not going to see Get Oiling compatible content in all of your classes. This is something that we will be rolling out slowly. By end of day Friday, we are going to have at least 10 classes preloaded into your workspace with the resource sharing bundles that Greg was talking about, that you will be able to instantly plug into your Get Oiling account. The plan going forward is to release those resource bundles with new classes as they are released. If possible, we will go back and do as many of the older classes, create the content for the older classes, and make that available as well. It's just not all going to happen all at once.
Okay, awesome, awesome. So you guys, you're going to see, I guess, just over time, we will sort of respectively be in touch with you, showing you exactly what you are able to use. And there's going to be links inside of the, sort of the bundles that you guys have, the classes that are purchased individually or just received by membership with you guys. There will be a link to and instructions on how to use this stuff and Get Oiling where it's applicable as we release it, right?
Right, you'll see a new section in your workspace. So for Grow Workspace members, you're going to be more familiar with what I'm talking about. When you click into each class, you currently see all of the sections of that class as far as the content that you can utilize. So you see the webinar, you see the Facebook posts, you see the printable. All of the classes that we release Get Oiling bundles for will have a new post within that class that will say Get Oiling Resource Share Bundle. And so you'll be able to click into that section of the class, and the share link will be right in there along with any of the campaign instructions will be in your workspace and also in the Get Oiling side of it, too. So it will be listed in the Get Oiling campaign when you log in on in that account.
Perfect, and we will be hosting future training exclusively for the implementation of this that will live inside of Grow Workspace. So that's something that is on the radar, too. We will be doing more of that to help you guys better integrate. Got some more questions. Greg, can you move your screen share, please, over to the Get Oiling sites, to our plans, so we can show folks what their options are with Get Oiling? Let's see, there was a question here, if you have both, will there be an extra fee to access this? No, Shelley, we just work hand in hand beautifully if you have both. Rebecca asks if there are affiliate links to share with our team for either. You do, once you sign up for Get Oiling, you do have a share link that will earn you credit. Basically, there are quite a number of our Get Oiling members who have theirs for basically free, if not totally free, and then paid into the future for the referrals that they've made. Greg's showing you right there, you've got a referral link. So yes, does Grow Workspace have any kind of affiliate sharing, Nicole?
So at this time, we don't have affiliate links. However, this month, we are running a promotion for referrals. We have several product bundles, Young Living product bundles valued at between $65 and $100 that we are giving away throughout the month for referrals. All you need to do is when you refer somebody to Grow Workspace, there is a box on the signup page where it asks them to enter the name of the person that referred them. And so they would just put your name in there. And then if you want to get in on the contest, if you go into the Facebook community, there is a post in there with a link to a Google form, and you just need to fill out that Google form every time you refer a member and they sign up with Grow Workspace in order to get your name in the drawing for some of those prizes. And we have more information on that in there as well.
Awesome, awesome. So what we're looking at right here, and Rebecca, I see your questions, and they're very good, and I want to get to them. Let's go over really quickly while we're on this page. Greg, this is where folks are going to land. When you go to getoiling.com/growlikeapro, this is how you are going to not only get started with Get Oiling for a dollar for your first month, but you are also going to be able to receive that funnel and campaign that we've talked about specifically for the Kidsense line. And yeah, so this is where you go to get it, and let's talk about our different member levels.
Sure, yeah, so what you're seeing here are the basic and premium are probably our two most popular plans, with premium maybe slightly more than basic. So with all of these plans, well, premium has, I would say, like, all the features. And so, but they all include, I mean, they all include pretty much everything. There's some team leader differences as you get to premium. Basically, your capacity increases as you move up here. But all these plans, you can start for a dollar the first month. And actually, you get, you know, with this Grow Like a Pro link that you're seeing here, you do actually get half off your second month as well. So really, in the end, you get two, or sorry, six weeks for a dollar, which is a pretty amazing deal. And yeah, they're just kind of a rundown of what you get with these plans. You know, our digital upline coach, the website builder, events, member area, contact manager, Zoom, you know, the hours of our training that we have with our weekly work sessions, Destined for Diamond. We have a, if you're concerned about like, well, how do I set up all this tech? We have a nice, it's about a 30-day email campaign that sends out to you when you sign up, walks you through step by step, like, every day, there's like, oh, here's a lesson. Next day, there is a, okay, today, we're going to, you know, like, say, for example, put your story in there. I think it'll tell you day one, like, okay, you need to put your story in here. Day two, this is how you do it, click here, click here, that sort of thing. So it walks you through, holds your hand, step by step, to get you started with Get Oiling. So yeah, basically, you can check these out. There's just, you know, different capacities, like, you know, if you need more people in Zoom, you can do that, you know, basically. Defining a plan or finding a plan that works for you based on where you're at in your business. The normal prices are here, you know, once the initial promo period is over, $29 a month for basic, $49 for you for premium. Like I said, these are two most popular plans. Pro is basically a much higher capacity plan. It also includes free two-way texting, that's a $9 add-on for basic and premium. So that is included with the Pro Plan as well. But yeah, the two-way texting is the back and forth feature where you can get your own phone number and send and receive text messages and offer text-in campaigns, which is actually a lot of what the campaigns that Grow offers. They'll have keywords where you can have somebody say, like, for example, text the word gifts to my phone number, and you'll get back my best holiday gift ideas for you, and then, you know, it'll drip back to them by text message. So yeah, that's the $9 add-on for basic and premium, so yeah.
I think there's a really, yeah, it's a really important thing to add to this. We actually just got a question about whether or not we offer like a paid service to set up your website, you know, so that it can be live. What you guys need to know, if you're not familiar with Get Oiling, What you guys need to know, if you're not familiar with GetOiling, is that this is plug and play. When you sign up for your GetOiling account, you enter your Young Living member number and you immediately have a beautiful site and a multitude of different templates to choose from, whether they are, you know, home wellness-based, body systems-based, kids-based, if you want country-specific complacency, we're all over the world and compliant in different markets. And you get to choose what themes you want. If you want makeup theme, pets theme, kids theme, it's all already there and really pretty and all coded to you. People can literally click off of your website and go order from you directly, immediately. And of course, it's ready for you to just pop in your story, your picture, and then plug in these campaigns and start sharing. And we've got tons, like Greg mentioned, tons and tons, hours and hours and hours of training that will point you specifically in the direction of where you want to go. And then, of course, we have these live weekly work sessions every Thursday where you can come here and ask questions. If you're not going to be on, send us an email. We'll show you how to do the thing you want to know how to do, if we don't already have a video to show you. And you can watch the recording once it's done. So this is plug and play. You do not have to be a tech whiz or a marketing expert. You literally have us, you have Grow, you pick what you want to use from Grow, you put the code in, and now you can go start sending great stuff out to the people that you want to send it to. Another really good question that we got, oh, go ahead, sorry.
Oh, I was gonna say, yeah, I mean, GetOiling has, it's been designed, it's designed to work from you, you know, even if you're very not tech savvy, all the way to somebody who really is tech savvy. So like Ashley mentioned, right out of the box, you get the beautiful website. Adding your story and photo is super simple, super easy. If you have any questions, you can, you know, get in touch with us. And it all goes, you know, goes all the way to the people, you know, the advanced digital marketers who want to build marketing funnels and custom pages and landing pages and all that stuff. So you don't have to use any of that. That's the cool thing about this, is like right out of the box, you have a very useful system that's easy to use and you go as far as you want to, you know, so you don't have to use it all.
So Rebecca asks if this is recommended for someone who's brand new, or does the team leader do it at first, or what level do you recommend for duplication? What, and okay, so, so just to, it's a sort of preface, we work with a broad range of distributors, even on a personal one-to-one coaching level and, and with assistance and implementation in this platform. And what I would say is, is that up until about executive, you can get away with staying at basic. Once you are executive to silver, you want to start looking at premium. By the time you're gold and, and near platinum, you absolutely need to be at pro, just because of the size of your team and the way that you want to be using our platform to leverage your time so that you aren't babysitting and so on. But before I get too far into the weeds, where we're talking about duplication and for somebody who's new, we actually have, like Greg mentioned, Destin for Diamond that holds your hand via email every day to help you set this up. You have our support, as Susan just mentioned in the comments, excellent customer service. Our, our team is Johnny on the spot, like really all the time. Who can, just quick show of hands, how many of you have reached out and gotten a super quick, like, oh my God, that was fast response? From, yep, there they go, hands, hands. So anyway, what, what I would recommend is, is that you get started, if you are silver and below, I would say, just, you know, give us a shot at basic. You have the digital upline coach, which is a really great tool to hold yourself accountable and then to assist with duplication in your team. If you're using Grow Workspace and they're, they're teaching tools to send out, you know, educational broadcasts to your team, to your members, this is going to be helpful to you at any level because you are no longer going one-to-one, face-to-face, manual-to-manual, trying to educate folks. This is going to work for you at any level of your business. Let's see, we will be able to share with you guys, of course, in the replay and then also in future training, exactly how you go from, okay, here, here it is in Grow Workspace and here is how you put it into your GetOiling. And, and just, just to save for the integrity of, of the process here, because we want to make sure that, you know, this only works for, for those who have both. Let's see, like I just mentioned, Rebecca, with working with your team, you will want to use Grow Workspace and their, their classes, their training and, and send that out via text, via email, put it in a member area, lots of ways to use that with GetOiling. Let me see. How will we, oh, good, good question, Nikki. How will we be notified when the new Grow Workspace campaigns and classes get into the, the GetOiling integration? And, and do we have to open each class individually to see if the GetOiling button is added? Noting that she has about 10 pages of content in Grow Workspace.
Yes. So we will probably send that information out to you through a variety of ways. For the initial release of the classes, and again, this will have to go through Chrissy, this is kind of a little impromptu. So I imagine we could send out an email to our members, letting them know that those resources are now available in their workspace. We will also definitely do a post in the VIP Facebook community, letting you know which classes we have added the bundles to and when those are live in your workspace. In answer to the second part of that, yes, you will have to click into each class in order to find the resource bundle for that class. We're not going to be able to just put those in one concise area because multiple members have different access to different classes. So logistically, that just doesn't work like that. We have to keep all of the content for each class within each class. But we also have a table of contents section in your workspace, which kind of gives a running list of all of the classes. And so it's probably possible that we could add something as just a little, yeah, if you want to click into the table of contents there, that will help. As you're scrolling down through the full table of contents, you can view all of the classes. Well, this kind of shows them all alphabetically, but if you want to click into that very first tab at the top of the screen where it says, yep, full table of contents. As you scroll down through there, this is organized kind of categorically, and then whenever you get near the bottom, the classes are listed in order of release. And so we kind of have little notations down next to each class currently, since our classes all include different things, because not all of the classes have Instagram yet, not all of the classes have the texting and sharing bundles yet. So we list in here, see, in parentheses, we have some classes that include Spanish. If you keep scrolling down there, you'll see some of the classes that have the texting bundles, the Spanish. So you'll see that noted in parentheses under the class title. We can definitely add GetOiling bundle to this section so that you can scroll through this list and be able to quickly see what classes have what content available to them.
Awesome. There's another question. Raquel asked, just to clarify, if we are a VIP member in Grow Workspace and sign up for GetOiling, will this be included? So if they have VIP with you, what does that mean for how they can use us?
If you are a current VIP member with Grow Workspace and you sign up for GetOiling, depending on when you began your membership with Grow Workspace, you may or may not currently have access to the Kidsense class. If the Kidsense class is already in your workspace, you will immediately have access to the GetOiling Share Bundle. If the Kidsense class is not in your workspace, then you can just send an email to support@growworkspace.com and you can just let us know that you're a premium member, you just signed up with GetOiling and you would like access to the Kidsense class, and we will add it to your workspace for you.
Fantastic. There's a question here about European promotions or European newsletter with Grow. She, she loves your images and loves what you guys put out. Do you know if that's on the radar for the near future?
It definitely is on the radar for the near future, depending on when you joined. Some of our most recently released classes do have European market-specific content already. So check your table of contents, go to that specialty classes section and look through some of those, the ones near the top of that section. Can't remember exactly when we started it, but I feel like we have at least three or four classes currently that have European market-specific content, and that's only going to be our newest classes. We do have plans in the works to hopefully continue to release more market-specific content for several different markets going forward. You will not see that in our older classes though, but you are welcome to utilize the content however you need it for your market. So once you're a Grow Workspace member, you can tweak the verbiage, make some additions. I know it's hard with photography and images, you know, to tweak those, but we are looking to hopefully add more of that going forward.
Awesome. Awesome. She says she's been a member of Grow Workspace for a while and she loves it.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah. Fantastic. This is beyond wonderful, Rebecca says. Okay, so here's a question, I'm stuck at STAR, what plan would you recommend I start with? I, I would say just start with basic at GetOiling. Go ahead and just get started for a dollar, start implementing, start saving yourself time. And really at the core of what this all means for you and your business, whether you're at STAR or, you know, or you're pushing Crown Diamond, is that you have resources to leverage that will save you time so that you can focus on the most profitable activities in your business. Whether you're just getting started and figuring this out, or you are, you know, working with a really big team, at the end of the day, what we lack is time. And what we wind up spending a great deal of time on is the stuff that you can use Grow Workspace and GetOiling to implement in half the time that you would normally spend, if not, you know, an even bigger margin than that. I don't know about you guys, but when I try to make something that's graphically oriented, it takes me 10 times longer than somebody who's actually qualified to do it. These guys have some of the most beautiful and well-put-together campaigns and images and classes. I mean, it's plug and play and now you have a place to plug it into really easily. So I'm super excited. We've got one more question here, if you guys, actually no, there's more, sorry. We're gonna keep, keep having more coming in. Amy asks in the comments, so Kidsense will be the first Grow partner with GetOiling and others added later? Actually, no, we have a whole list of, of campaigns that are already ready to go that are inside of Grow Workspace. You just click them inside of your, your Grow class and you can load them into GetOiling. Kidsense is one that we're offering as a bonus right now. If you go to GetOiling.com/growlikeapro, you get started with GetOiling, you're going to get that bonus for free, that Kidsense bonus for free.
Ashley, if I could just chime in there for a minute?
Please.
So we do have the list of 10 classes prepared. However, for Grow Workspace members, those are not yet live in their workspace. So we will be having those ready by the end of the day tomorrow. We had some graphic updates that we needed to make. We still are working on updating all of our content to reflect all of the changes that Young Living has made over the last several months, as far as starter kits and some YLgo changes. And so it's a huge task to update all of those graphics for all of those classes. So we want to make sure that when we release the content for the GetOiling people, that all of that is current, ready to go. So we just have a few more updates that we have to make to those. And then, like I said, we will get that list of the 10 classes, so you will know exactly what 10 they are out to you, and then it will be ready to go. So we're, we're close.
Awesome. Awesome. Okay, we've, we've got this lovely comment that I just have to share with you guys and read this out for everyone, you know, watching the recording and everything. Gwen says, "I've had GetOiling for six months and every single question I have had has been answered almost immediately. I had a last-minute request to have a vendor table at a school event tonight and I was sitting down to write out a campaign to attach to a landing page when I saw the bundle option. I uploaded it and litter, in literally less than a minute, it was built." We're talking about using Grow here. "In literally less than a minute, it was built. So tonight, I'm going to have my iPad sitting on the table for people to register to get more information and they will automatically be loaded into my contact manager and get a campaign about Kidsense." Amazing. How cool is that? So, so cool. Karen is asking, "I have the website, but I'm not using it because I want to customize it first. I am tech challenged, don't know where to begin. Can you tell me exactly where to start first, Destin for Diamond, 90 days, et cetera?" So Karen, what, what I would recommend that you do is, the only customization that you need to make to your GetOiling site is to upload your photo and your story. And that's, that's it. That's all you really need to do. Then you just need to use it as a sharing tool. So there are, there's actually a quick series of, when you sign into your GetOiling account, there's a little teal bar with a rocket on it. And if you click it, it's going to give you just a quick series of short things that are going to show you how to make sure that you're set up correctly, how to import your contacts from your YLVO, and, and just go from there, just one thing at a time. You can do everything with us, but you don't have to do everything with us. Just do one thing at a time and you're going to be good to go. And make sure that you're tuned into these trainings because we're here to help you. So long as you are in action, you are going to move forward and we're here to support you doing that. Rebecca asks, "I've bounced between silver and executive, have leaders in 125 group. What package do you recommend as a leader and just starting for Grow and for GetOiling?" I, I mean, I, I think that their annual is just a sick deal, you guys. I think the Grow Annual Plan is, is a killer deal for what you get and just how much you can do with it. And then in terms of GetOiling, where you are, you could, you could go basic or you could go premium. I would say, just depending on what your priorities are, how savvy you feel and how ready you are to really dive in and commit, you could start at pro. And if you felt like you needed to, you know, scale things down, it's really easy to move up and down in your plans and GetOiling. And of course, we've got support to be here for you at every step of the way. All right. Let's see. Anyone know the link for the Grow Workspace app? You guys, you guys have an app, Nicole, is that something that they would get through, like, like internally through, through the website or are you guys in an app store?
Right. If you are a premium member, whenever you log into GrowWorkspace.com on your phone, there is actually a bar that goes across the top of your screen that gives you instructions on how to get the app. You can just go to your app store. The app is not called Grow Workspace, it's actually called Kajabi. That's K-A-J-A-B-I. So that's what you want to search in the work store. It's a little blue icon with a little white K in the middle of it. And that's the app that you will download and then you will enter your Grow Workspace login information there. All of your content pops right up on your phone.
There we go. Awesome. So Diane is asking, so first start in Grow Workspace. I know you are a GetOiling member, so yes, you need to, you need to get your Grow Workspace and then you're going to be able to start using that content and plugging it into GetOiling. Now, I've actually, and it was your account Diane, that I created this sort of demo for the Kidspace, because you had access to the Kidspace bundle already. I actually created a funnel in her account as a demonstration for everyone on how you can turn a Grow Workspace class into a full-on funnel, live event and pre-recorded sort of webinar recording situation. So you would start in Grow Workspace and then you would select whatever content that it is that you want to use. And then you're going to have instructions and a link, right? Am I saying that right? There's, it's going to be like a button and a link, instructions on how to transfer this over very easily into GetOiling so you can start using it. And then just as you would send any campaign in GetOiling, you attach it to a landing page, you add a text and code to it, you can then start sending that out to your contacts and to your leads. Did I get that right?
Yeah.
Awesome. Awesome. Joanne is asking, "With GetOiling, can I use Grow Workspace and other content?" Yes, you can use your own, you can use other, you know, third-party providers. Absolutely. Grow Workspace and GetOiling, Susan, are two separate entities and you'll have to have both of them to be able to use them. But as you can see right here, when you go to GetOiling.com/grow with this premium bundle, you, and if you use the code FRIENDS19 here for the end of this, like through the end of this month, you get $5 off of the monthly. And then, of course, that premium bundle, that's got, that's got some months for free on it, doesn't it?
Yeah, you get almost three months for free. And with the monthly plan, you're getting actually five weeks for $10 if you use the code. So that is a great opportunity to try, try it out, see how it integrates with GetOiling, ease of use. For 10 bucks, you really can't go wrong, you know, to take five weeks to make a decision and, and really be blown away.
Right, right. Yeah, no, that's, that's like a total of, yeah, it's like 11 bucks that you're spending total, a dollar for us, like 10 for you if you're using the, the $5 code. And that's like, yeah, that's like six, seven weeks to, to really get your game on in your business and then say, okay, I'm, I'm ready to really rock and roll with this. Plenty of time. I wanted to see, there was something else. Oh, Nicole, how many, and this, this is just a question, this hasn't been asked, a lot of people may already know this, how many different classes do you guys have on offer right now? So like, if somebody were to sign up with you guys, like what is sort of the breadth of what they could have?
Well, currently with, for currently for a new member with the premium bundle, you get the, like I said, the four classes stocked in your workspace, you get the two free classes that we are offering to premium members. We have a full class store that has all of the classes that we have released from the very beginning. So two classes a month times two years, there's a lot of content available. We had a class bundle, so it gave you 24 classes that were released in 2018. That recently just went away, but I will give you, I, I can't let the entire cat out of the bag, but I can tell you if you are looking to score. bag, but I can tell you if you are looking to score a bulk amount of our past content, keep your eyes peeled next week for a special announcement. That's all the more I'm going to say, or I might get fired.
Okay. We'll keep that cat in the bag here. All right, so Sherma says, hi, Sherma, this is amazing and exciting. I just added the Kidsense campaign to my Get Oiling back office. I've been using both, Get Oiling and Grow Workspace together for years, but this is a game changer. Sherry says, "I love both Get Oiling and Grow Workspace, so the fact that you're partnering is the best news ever."
And this is a testament to how quick and easy it is because current Grow Workspace members up until an hour ago, or an hour and 15 minutes ago, did not even have access to the Kidsense Get Oiling Resource Share Bundle link. So that is something that we just published for our current Grow Workspace members right before this webinar started, and you already have people who are utilizing that content within.
They're already popping it off. Hey, for those, for those of you who just did this, how easy was it? Tell us in the comments, how, how much time did it take for you to go in and plug this up? So simple, all caps, Gwen says. I love it, I love it. This is so cool. 60 seconds, Sherma says. Ah, that's awesome. All right, Amy says, "Holy cow, one of my worst faults business-wise is that I have all these resources and don't fully implement them. I'm so excited about this. Time to finally get to gold. Shelley and I are going to work this like a boss. She's my first line and knows how to use Get Oiling like a pro." All right, I think I know who you're talking about. Thanks so much for this. So excited. Can't wait to give my testimony on how fast this made us rank. Love it, love it, love it. All right. Well, if you guys have anything else to add, if anybody has any additional questions before we get going, you guys, I'm going to pop these links back up here so that you don't miss them. If I, well, where did it go? Give me a second. That's not the right one. Yeah, go ahead, send, let's see, can you answer, oh, there was a two-way, a two-way texting question. Sarah, I think I may have clicked a button on that question incorrectly. Could you type it for us one more time in the Q and A, or better, because I know this is a little bit in the weeds? And go ahead.
Ashley, I have it here.
Oh, you do?
Two-way texting question. "I am based in Germany but got a US number to text my US members. I tested my German campaign on myself, which meant the US number texted my German number. Did the cost, did that cost more somehow for me? It isn't ideal, so I know now to email my German members."
Yeah, as far as the, the texting, oh, sorry, were you gonna?
No, go ahead, honey. Go.
Yeah, so the, the texting, the costs in US and Canada are, I think it's, it's 15 credits per text message per recipient, or if you include a picture. It's up, I think it's 40 credits, 40 marketing credits inside of Get Oiling. Every account comes with a certain number of marketing credits. Outside of the US, the cost does vary, and it's very, varies not, I mean, you can't really say like, oh, this country has this many credits. So it varies based on carrier and all these other things. So it's, yeah, you basically send a text test, go back into your contact manager, click on the past action, and it'll tell you how many, how many credits it used. So once you know that, then you can kind of paste that out. If you need more marketing credits, they're really not that expensive. You can just send us an email and we can hook you up. Or I think if you're on a month-month plan, you can click in the back office and buy more if you just need some on the spot. So, but yeah, the, the texting cost does vary based on the country, as does some of the, you know, picture message, delivery capability kind of depends on handset and, and where in the world it's sending. But Get Oiling can send to recipients in over 200 countries. So hopefully Sarah, that answers your question.
Awesome. And guys, just note right here, if you are ready to go and get your Grow Workspace bundle and start plugging this in to Get Oiling, go to getoiling.com/grow and use the code FRIENDS19 through the end of November 19 for $5 off and a free DIY class. And if you are not yet a Get Oiling member, head over to getoiling.com/growlikeapro to get a dollar for your first, actually, month and a half, not just a month, and get the Kidsense campaign from Grow for free.
Nicole, there's another question for you. I just looked for new classes to see if they have European content, but they are in alphabetical order. So how do you see what are the latest classes?
If you go into the table, the, the full table of content section that Greg had up earlier, so when you click on the table of contents, the very first lesson at the top of the screen says Full Table of Contents. If you click into there and you scroll down into the Specialty Classes section, you will also see there are release dates listed next to the class titles. But if you scroll down into the Specialty Classes section, those are most of our newly released classes, and they are listed in order of newest release to oldest release.
Awesome. And then, when did she say we might expect to see other classes with the Get Oiling bundle?
End of day tomorrow.
Great. Ashley, I think you are muted.
Sorry about that. The mouse doesn't work while I'm sharing my screen at the same time. You guys, I am so excited to see your excitement and all of these great questions. Who's ready to go out and absolutely crush it in their business now with these two things together powering your growth? Show hands, let's hear it. So, so exciting. All right, well, you guys know where to find us. We are here every week, noon Eastern, getoiling.com/weeklyworksession. Look forward to more sessions. I think we're going to do another live on Grow's page as well. We're going to have the Grow team back here. This is not just a thing for right now, this is a thing for the future. So, you know, like Nicole said, by close of the day tomorrow, you're going to see a lot more that you can plug in to Get Oiling from Grow Workspace. Go ahead and make sure you're a member now to both, and, and you can take advantage of that. And then there is just, there's so much more to come. There's so much potential with this, and we're excited to serve you guys and the growth of your business. Let's do this.
Yes, very exciting. And if after this, you guys have any questions, you can reach out to our customer service inbox, which is info@getoiling.com, or what's the other one, Greg?
For Get Oiling, and then for Grow Workspace, it's what, Nicole?
Support@growworkspace.com.
Awesome, thanks.
Okay. That's it. Happy oiling, people. It's going to be a great end to 2019. Shelley is lit. All right. All right, well, you guys, thank you so much for being here, and we will see you on the next one. Thank you so much, Nicole. Hope Chrissy feels better. I hope Clara's having a blast. I know she's having a blast.
She's on the other side of the world right now, so I'm drooling over her, all of her Instagram pictures.
Right, right. All right, well, you guys, we're, we're so honored to be partnering with you guys and so, so excited for the future holds. So thank you, and we look forward to seeing you guys all next week.
Yes, thanks, everyone.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.